Again, even though it's not on our agenda, I'm going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clearly, we have an abbreviated group tonight with both Suzanne Wright and Glenn Pastor out. So, we're going to go to committee announcements, and John, I will start with you.
It's been a quick summer, but I'm going to yield my time back if you may, just in the interest of time tonight.
All right. I almost called you Suzanne.
I know you did.
Karen?
I don't have anything tonight. It's summertime.
All right. I have three things. First is, I want to encourage anybody who's watching this to log on to the newly-launched swampscottssaysyes.org. This is the new website that answers and provides all sorts of information about the new elementary school project that is going to be presented to town meeting in the fall. We're really excited about this. It contains a lot of information, so if anybody is watching this, do please check it out. The second thing I wanted to share is probably what is on anybody's mind who's logged in, which is the issues of masks and vaccines, and I want to thank you Superintendent for sending out that information today. And just remind everybody that as fed up as everyone is, that this is going to be another exercise in patience because things are going to change, hopefully not as often as they did last year. But just today, I had two separate conversations with two opposite sides of the spectrum. One, a parent who was expressing her concern for her child who had some medical issues and could not mask, and the problems that that could happen should they need to. And then another parent who, while it wasn't a medical reason, was imploring us to not have masks. Oh, no, sorry, the other side, imploring us to mask up because of what's changing. So, it was a great time for your email to go out, and I think.
Well, you're welcome. I was going to send it tomorrow following my school committee superintendent's report because I say very similar things here tonight, but I wanted to get ahead of it because I know there was some concern, and Mr. Pastor had brought to my attention that there was a lot of conversations going on about it, so.
And lastly, I just want to acknowledge you Superintendent and everybody who is on your team, the people who are joining us tonight in this meeting, but everybody. I personally have been reading a lot about secondary trauma and want to acknowledge what you've all been through, you know, whether it's in the classroom or for, you know, the gentlemen who are cleaning up the schools and the kids that they're helping, the meetings and the decisions that you've had to make, the occasional abuse that you've had to work through. And, you know, I think it's going to be very easy for everybody to say, "Well, you know, I've had trauma too." But I just, I want to be particularly mindful as we go into this new school year with everybody feeling sort of, you know, anxious to get back to normal and say the unfortunate, "I don't think we're there yet." So, I just, I want to acknowledge all the work that you guys have done and hope that everybody on your team has had the opportunity to take time off so that you can clear your head as much as possible.
Well, that's a good lead-in. I was just going to say to the committee, thank you very much for that. I don't think any of us, teachers, custodians, administrative assistants, ESPs, tutors, realized what we were going through while we were in the midst of it, and it wasn't until the year ended and the kids left and the halls got quiet and the teachers left that I think for my team and I, the exhaustion really hit. We have been in recovery mode for most of July, trying to get ourselves back to a good headspace, and it was almost, I think I shared with you, it was almost like something happened and you hold it together while you're getting through it, and then you get to the other side and you're in shock about what you went through.
The adrenaline rushes like over.
Yes, yes. And I equated it to, I know, you know, I've been an offender bender, and I held it together while the police and the insurance and you exchanged pay. And then all of a sudden, you think about what could have happened. And I, for me personally and my team, it's been really, really important for us to take some time to reacquaint ourselves with our family, with our children, and really kind of get in a better headspace to face what's coming. And so, I know the community and the parents and the families are looking for concrete answers, but as I said in my letter today, you know, it's still four weeks away, but it's only four weeks away, and we're trying to balance that. We know four weeks flies by, but we don't know if more guidance is going to come, if more, we don't know what the numbers are going to be. Just know that we're going to communicate, continue to communicate. That's what I said today is my first of several communications that will be coming out. And so, we also have to take the lessons learned from this pandemic. And as we go into a four-day retreat with my leadership team next week, we're going to be having a lot of conversations about what were some good takeaways? When is Zoom appropriate? You know, how are we going to move forward with some of the lessons that we learned? But it's been, it's been a month of trying to recover, and I think I speak for my entire team when I say that. So, thank you. Thank you for that.
Well, I think I speak for the whole school committee when I say that we are involved as parents, obviously, but we're far enough removed from the traumas of the everyday job. So, whatever we can do to continue to support you, to do the amazing job that you did.
Thank you.
Please, you and your whole team, please say so, because that's what we're here for.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and I know my team appreciates that as well. So, that leads into my superintendent's report. And I'm going to, moving forward this year, I'm going to ask Maureen to just leave everything under the superintendent's report, and so tonight is an example of that, even though there are three things, A, B, and C on the agenda. B and C have been rolled into my superintendent's report with links so that when I blog, I put this report on the blog, everyone can just link to the documents and don't have to go to various places. So, I'm going to reiterate what I said in my communication to families today, and that is, the DESI mask guidance came out last week on June 30th. And I, I'm going to read it to you just for the audience's sake, that DESI and DPH strongly recommend that all students in kindergarten through grade six wear masks when indoors, except when students who cannot do so because of medical conditions or behavioral needs. Masks are not necessary outdoors and may be removed while eating indoors. The commissioner spoke to us at the superintendent's conference, and there was no talk of social distancing. And so, that is a consideration we have to have with our lunches. I know we've been talking about how many lunches do we need? If there is still no social distancing and masks are not necessary, we can get back to a much more normal schedule. DESI and DPH also strongly recommend that unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grade seven and above, and unvaccinated visitors wear masks indoors in alignment with the statewide advisory on masking, and all of that link on the advisory is here. And DESI and DPH recommend that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. I'm going to jump to the other bullet. Any child or family who prefers to mask at school should be supported in this choice, which is what we're doing in our summer school program right now, in an extended school year program here at the high school. And we thought about, what did you say, 20%?
I think Dr. Bacon thought about was about 20% of kids are wearing masks right now.
So, they are using, you know, their own judgment, and I think that's great. One of the other bullets talks about it would still be required to wear masks on school buses at this time, and I think they put that in there because obviously, we're still watching the metrics and watching the cases. And all staff and students must wear masks while in the school health offices. That shouldn't come as a shock. If you go to any medical facility, whether it be a veterinarian's office, a dentist's office, a health office, you have to mask. So, we are going to notify families as soon as possible, but as I said in my communication today, you know, there's a lot of pieces and moving parts to this. The Delta variant is in our community. We were notified that there are 11 cases in our town, some of which were pediatric. We still need to monitor those numbers and how it impacts school-aged children. We do have a tabletop exercise scheduled at a local health department. We have to have discussions with the leadership team next week at the retreat and thoughts from the school committee as well. I did put in bold here or highlight that, you know, if you were going to ask me for my recommendation tonight, it would be to follow DESI guidance. And what I would take it one step further, though, and I want to talk to my team about this, and maybe the state will give guidance on this, that I would also recommend establishing a guideline. If our members in the community hit a certain threshold and our numbers in school, the number of cases hit a certain threshold, maybe that would be when we implement full masking. But I understand DESI's recommendation, you know, we are not vaccinating students 12 and under. I understand that. At the same time, we were just saying every family situation is different, and so if we leave it to family choice, that's an option as well. But we have a lot of conversations still to be had, a lot of information still to come in. There is a lot of talk, not only, there's actually some drop-in sessions with the North Shore Roundtable Group that I'm a part of, that is 18 to 20 superintendents in our area, and we're all talking about what is probably best for our districts, our communities, what are our numbers looking like? So, to make a decision in isolation and to make it now doesn't feel right to me. And so, that's my recommendation, just to stay the course and keep communicating and keep everybody involved.
Do you happen to know anything more than just the number of cases? For example, if any of them were hospitalizations?
I do not know that. There was, there's going to be another meeting tomorrow morning. I can follow up with Mrs. Mulcahy here, our occupational health nurse, after that meeting and find out, you know, were they vaccinated, were they unvaccinated, how many pediatric cases? Those are the things that I want to start keeping track of.
Yeah, and not just whose, you know, how many positive cases there are, but how, I don't know if this is the right word, but how impactful they are or could be. You know, because if, because of vaccine rates, if we've just moved along enough that there are people who are carrying it but aren't sick.
We definitely need more information. And I know it was alarming to some on the town side that there were 11 cases in one week, but I think we need to dig a little deeper. How many pediatric cases? Were they school-aged children? Were they younger? And so, we're just, we're just starting to have those conversations as the Delta variant has come in.
And I'd be curious to know what triggered the test. You know, was it because they were going to travel? Was it because they were feeling sick? You know, because we know if there are lots of tests being done, that they're going to discover.
That's a good point.
I don't know if anybody wants to add on to that.
I was just curious. You said 11. I'm just wondering what it was before, like the week before or the week before that?
I think it was zero.
It was three, it was three the week before, and then prior to that, I think there were almost six weeks of zero. And I'll say that so far, no problems in our summer learning program, and we have close to 300 students.
Yes.
That's great.
We have not had a problem. Are you going to ask Amanda Mulcahy to ask for these questions tomorrow? Like, are we asking?
She probably has the information.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a meeting at eight in the morning that she's a part of, and then she goes on to the call at nine, I believe. So, I'll try to get those questions answered as well.
Because I would be interested to know how, how they know it's Delta. Like, are they testing for that? I didn't think that they were. Like, when you go get tested, I wasn't sure that they were specifically looking for that or not. I've heard no, and then don't, but obviously, they must be in some places.
Okay, I was just taking notes on the questions to ask. Moving on to the next item, it's staff enrolling non-resident students. As the committee knows, there is a provision in the teacher collective bargaining agreement that speaks to non-resident teachers' children attending our schools. I put the article in my report just to show you how far back it goes. It began in the 2014-2015 school year. I'm not going to read it to you, but if you go below the article that I put here, you'll see that the statistics for the 2021-2022 school year, which came before the committee, is that a total of six students are enrolled as a result of this article in the CBA. I think when we were way back into, and when we were implementing this, we had a fear that we were going to have an onslaught of students coming in. And one of the things that this represents is that a lot of our teachers are residents in the community. So, we do currently have six students. So, why this is on the agenda tonight is because we have had a couple of requests coming from other employees. We have a scenario where a non-union employee who's under an individual contract is asking for their child to come be enrolled in the Swampscott public schools, and then we have an employee at will who is not under a long-term contract. And so, what I'm asking, actually, go below the highlighted point. We have a procedure for non-resident, for non-resident staff enrolling their kids, and it's a multi-page that is linked here that are guidelines for how we go about this. And what I'm asking the committee to do is to give the superintendent the authority to extend this benefit to other employees at my discretion and following those procedural guidelines that are already in place. The guidelines such as what are the needs of the child? Every year, they have to be in good standing behaviorally? Is this going to be taking a seat from one of our Boston students or one of our resident students? All of those considerations would be given. I'm just asking for the flexibility to come up with some guidance that would allow for this benefit to be extended. In my mind, it's pretty special that these people are asking that especially a non-union employee under an individual contract, to me, that's a commitment to the district and that commitment as an employee, and that if their child is here, then they're going to stay here and remain here, and there could be longevity. I have a little bit of concern about an employee at will. So, to me, it's not just about a union contract, but someone under long-term contract. And so, that's the difference that I'm making right now. But ultimately, it is the committee's, you know, decision, right, to make that decision, but my recommendation would be that you give me the authority to make these decisions on a case-by-case basis.
Team?
And there is a vote requested on this.
For tonight?
Yes.
So, isn't, well, it's in the contract, but did we also write a policy for that or not? Would we need to amend a policy? I can't, I honestly can't remember.
We wrote a procedure.
Just a procedure?
A procedure. I, that's a good question. I could search for a policy, but I don't.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because I think the article itself.
In the, in the contract.
Was the policy. What it was was the procedure, and remember, any students that are coming in cannot add a cost to the district.
Right. I just wanted to make that clear. And additionally, I believe, at least in the beginning, and I'm not sure if this is still happening, but they, but the parents needed to sign to that effect.
They do.
They understood all the rules. Each year, they had to sign.
They do.
They understood.
And every student is reevaluated annually if they want to continue.
Right.
Are they following the code of conduct? Are they, are they in good standing? And so, it is a privilege and an honor and one that can be taken away annually. But I do think there's something to be said for employees who are asking for this because it shows a commitment to the district.
So, I, based on a conversation that we had last spring about foreign exchange students, I do have concerns to what Ms. Raymond was talking about in terms of special needs and the idea of, you know, once you, once the kid is yours, the kid is yours. So, I don't know.
It's a little bit different because we, in the policy, people know prior procedures. They know prior that if there were any additional costs to the district, and we use the formula from Circuit Breaker, similar to what we would do with the Nahot contract, that they would have to pay for that. The, the cost through the Nahot, through the Circuit Breaker, is, so for instance, a student who may seem to not have a very intensive IEP service, maybe is at our high school in a co-taught math and a task class, for instance, that would cost about $35,000, so it's so prohibitive that it wouldn't happen. Right? Nobody would pay that because it's, that's a free, in your own district.
That would be free.
Right.
Yeah.
We actually, I'm not, I'm not violating anything. We've had a couple of cases where teachers have come forward and because there would be a cost associated, have chosen not to do it. And I want to reiterate here that part of this procedure is no additional staffing or transportation would be provided, whether an appropriate educational program for the student exists in the schools, provided that the education of the student with disabilities remains the financial responsibility of the student's family. Any tax liability associated with acceptance of this benefit is the responsibility of the parent and teacher. So, they would get this and understand this and have to adhere to this, and that's what I'm asking for. We use the same procedure and the same guidelines for whatever moves forward.
And if, and if numbers do change, would teachers, students have priority? Because that's actually contracted.
Yes, yes. That's another, it's an absolute, obviously, if, I'm going to be very careful about the numbers getting too high because what's best for students is not to suddenly say, "There's not a slot for you. You've been here for three years. We're going to pull you out." But this would be done very carefully and very thoughtfully. And this really only impacts one person right now who's requesting this because that's the person that is under contract, is going to be a long-term employee, and, but teachers would have priority since it is in their CBA.
I mean, it was always, in my mind, going to eventually include other employees, principals or central, anybody who didn't live in town but wanted to, you know.
We did extend it to another contracted employee that is not in the union. We did that a couple of years ago. Now, three, maybe. So, this is just another, another individual contracted employee.
Well, and another perk that you can offer as an employer?
Mm-hmm.
Do you?
My question, you read my mind, was on, on the priority as well, you know, where the teachers would fall versus.
They're first.
Contractors or under contract. I guess conception, I don't have an issue with this. You know, I think the committee should be updated, though, as far as.
Sure.
Where the numbers are headed, just so, you know, we can at least.
So, this would up our numbers to seven because I have, I have difficulty with an at-will employee receiving the same benefit. So, that's where my line is. So, this is really only about one student, one employee right now. And I, and my other guideline would be, it would have to happen at this time of year. It can't just be the middle of the year.
Right, right, right.
We're not going to start adding. So, it would be an annual thing that I would update the committee about during the summer and during, when enrollment changes.
Do these procedures need to be updated, then, to reflect kind of, you know?
Not because, well, that's a good point. Perhaps we could craft another one? That this, this has been what happens for the teachers.
Yeah, this says non-resident teachers, student.
So, I think we maybe could do a supplement to this or an addendum that speaks to the other contracted, individual contracted employees.
Your office would do that, right?
Yes.
It's not policy, so we wouldn't do it.
It's procedure.
So, my only other concern is about the elementary schools and particularly currently, you know. I know that there is fluctuation in terms of how many sections there are for each grade. And I don't, you know, it's, I tend to think that with seven and it's spread across grades that it's, you know, that they're not all coming in as kindergartners.
But we have 10th down to kindergarten.
So, that's my only other concern, is really preserving the very tenuous class sizes that we already have.
Understood. That would be part of the conscious decision because I believe it says the number of available slots. You know, we have to have, we have a commitment to small class sizes, even though we reduced to seven sections, and so that, we have to be very conscious of that. We do have a bubble grade that has eight sections that is moving through, but we would keep that in mind as well. So.
Okay, so then with that, I would entertain a motion to allow the superintendent to.
I already just taken off of this yellow.
Okay, let me just open that up. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to give the superintendent the authority to extend the enrollment of non-resident students and this benefit to other employees at the superintendent's discretion following the current procedural guidelines in place.
I'll make the motion?
Will you second it?
I'll second.
There's not enough of us to do this.
Any further discussion? Okay, so with that, a roll call vote. Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Jantus?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to just reiterate what John said, which is that, you know, that this would just continue to be something that you update us with.
Absolutely.
No secrets?
No secrets. The next item on my agenda is ESER III. I have added two links into my report. One is a Quick Reference Guide that Ms. Seibert shared with us that is really, for someone that's very visual like me, this is an easy piece of information to look at because there's so much information around this ESER grant. And then I've also included, so take a look at, first of all, the Quick Reference Guide. And it talks about an overview, the allocations, key information. And this part, the requirements on the next page, the second page, are the most important and why I'm sharing this with the committee tonight. There is stakeholder engagement that must be included as part of the development of this, and they list students, families, school, district administrators, teachers, principals, civil rights organizations, English language learners, children with disabilities, and children, youth, and foster care. So, we are reaching out to all of these groups, CPAC, the LPAC, the Parent Advisory. I have connected with Ally Fisk at Town Hall to ask about civil rights organizations and connections, and we need their input of how they think this money should be spent. One of the other stipulations of this grant is that 20% needs to be set aside to address the academic impact of loss of instructional time. We, as a team, the Marthas, Dr. Bacon, and myself have met and come up with some preliminary ideas. But the second link in my report talks about a community input memo. I'm having trouble speaking tonight, that there will be a meeting held, a Zoom meeting, on Wednesday, August 11th from 6:30 to 8:30, and it is a public input session. The link to the meeting is not only here in my report, but it's also in this communication that will be going home. And we are really soliciting as much, as much feedback as we can get and how the community would love this money to be spent. In addition, there is a survey link. Did I delete the survey link? And so, the survey link is in the memo as well. Dr. Bacon and Mrs. Raymond worked on this community memo. It might change slightly, but I wanted to have people have access to that. So, we are in the process of working on that. So, mark your calendars, August 11th, 6:30 to 8:30, a Zoom meeting. Please attend, and please give your input on how you would like these funds spent. But I thought that this document, this Quick Reference Guide that Ms. Seibert shared with all of us is really, kind of sums up this grant very easily for everybody to understand the guidelines here.
Will the head of the Parent Association for our Metco students be included?
I did reach out to Latoya to reach out to them directly. So, once it all goes through everybody, I have my people that are going to do those personal invites to try to get all the voices that we want at the meeting.
Okay.
And there's also the survey, too, because I know, understand people have commitments, too. But they'll be able to give their input that way as well.
And I, my other suggestion is that we ask Town Hall to include that, that communication in their, I think it's weekly or bi-weekly newsletter that they send out?
Yes, let me find out. I'll have Mrs.
Because I think, in particular, parents of very young children. Because I think, in particular, parents of very young children, or kids who are not kindergarten yet.
I'll do that in the morning, because Mrs. Karen is out the next two days. I will make sure I connect with Ally at Fisk and make sure that gets in there. That's great. That's great advice. And the last item on my agenda is a change, proposed and necessary calendar changes for the school year. It's really important that we're doing it this time of summer. If we waited till the 25th, we need to give parents a head up. Heads up, we are proposing, due to PD needs for our district and for our staff, that we bump the start day for students from August 31st to September 1st. So the changes that are proposed is that Monday, August 30th would be a professional, well, it would be a staff day. August 31st would be a staff day, and September 1st would be students' first day, grades K, pre-K, 1 through 12. Remember kindergarten screening happens. The reason being, there is necessary professional development for programs that are being implemented during the school year. And what we are doing is taking away the November 2nd PD date. We worked with the teachers' union and said, are you okay if we swap that day? We would have school in session on November 2nd. There is no election. And we're moving it to the beginning of the school year, because of the necessary training that needs to occur. There will be a vote on October 19th for the new school. I'm going to say there will be. And the town has asked that we allow them to use the high school for all six precincts again. And as a result of that, I'm going to make that an early release day. So the major changes are that the start date would move by one day from August 31st to September 1st. November 2nd would be a normal school day now, no longer a full day of professional development. And October 19th would become a, an early release day, because the voting for the new school would be here at the high school.
So there isn't, so Election Day on November 2nd, there is nothing?
Nothing. There will be one next April, and I'm working with Sue Duplin really hard to get it out of the schools. I, I understand that they like it in one location. Suggestion I made is the senior center and Town Hall. They're both ADA accessible. But the teachers are very uncomfortable with everybody, even at the high school level, with the students and the kids. And so we, we did a great job getting it out of the middle school. That makes life a little bit easier. But it really should not be in a school, not during these times. And so I'm suggesting they split up the precincts between the senior center and Town Hall. I understand they need time to make that happen. And for the October 19th vote, we obviously want to make it as easy as possible and work collaboratively with the town. And so we would keep it here at the high school.
My only concern is why it would be an early release day and just not a, a day.
Because the teachers are very uncomfortable having voting in any building with teachers and staff. And it being.
No, 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 no.
No, like, why not a day off completely?
Oh, because I don't want to take another, we're already, I don't want to take another day off.
Because in some ways, I, I think it's sort of like the horses out of the barn. If they're here for half of the day and they're in our school.
Well, then that changes the calendar at the end of the year. We go one more day.
Right.
And I have to look at what, that last day of school, if we change this calendar right now.
I mean, I'm fundamentally against having.
The polls.
The polls open while our kids are here.
Right. We can do that. If the committee would feel better moving our last day of school to one more day. That's certainly, but it's all going to depend on the September 13th Town Meeting vote.
And it also, and, and the, the last day is currently scheduled for June?
20th?
20th, is that right?
No school closed June 20th, June 20. I need my glasses, my other glasses.
I mean, I, I also hate to put it out, because a day in October is certainly more valuable than a day in June.
That's why we felt, and, and speaking with the union as well, we felt like we needed to be in. It's not at four of the schools, the three elementary or the middle school. But also recognizing that there, we, we don't feel safe with it in the schools. And so that was the half-day concession.
Would they be gone, would the kids be gone by lunch, so that time when they're moving around the most?
Yes. We would do a grab-and-go lunch. That seems to have worked, and they would be out the door. But it would count as a day, not bumping that day any later. And it is prime learning time, October, so.
I mean, it's not optimal, but.
I'd want to see more support from our police department.
That's something that, you know, we can speak to the town about, but I anticipate, if the vote, when the vote passes Town Meeting, that October 19th is going to be a very, very busy day.
Okay.
So I am asking for a vote for these changes, so that we can redistribute. Actually, there is no vote requested on the agenda.
I thought that, I thought I saw a vote on the agenda. Sorry.
There's, there's a lot of votes tonight, but.
I mean, but certainly we could talk about what entrance in, I mean, sort of blocking off the cafeteria area.
Yes, yes.
And so that.
Actually, we're going to move it up to the gym, the field house, so they would come in the back. We're even going so far as that they would not come in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Ms. Duplin and Mr. Kohat are working on the back entrance, straight up the field house, unless they have to use the elevator. And so it would be upstairs.
I feel better about that.
Mm-hmm.
Any thoughts?
No, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, I, I'd rather have them in school than take the whole day off.
Uh, yeah.
Put it at the end of the year.
I agree. I don't think adding a, tacking a day on at the end is when.
No, it's.
Real learning.
And those last two days are half-days, so.
Right.
I, I think this is the best solution.
Were, were the folks at Town Hall understanding and looking to really work?
We've had great conversations with Sue Duplin.
Okay.
Great conversations.
I, I would say, my caveat is that we have more than the, the usual police presence.
Yep, I will make a note of that. And that concludes my report.
So do we need to approve?
The calendar?
Why don't we take a vote?
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like we need to.
Okay, so I am going to entertain a motion to accept the proposed calendar changes as proposed by the superintendent.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. How quickly will parents be notified of that, that change of first day?
Say that again?
How quickly can, will parents be notified of that change of the first day?
Monday. Mrs. Karen is out tomorrow and Friday. We can get this out Monday, the 9th.
Can we get it out sooner?
This is Mrs. Karen's. I can, I can send an email, letting parents know. They're going to get sick of my emails, but I'd really rather have it be more formalized with Mrs. Karen.
Okay.
It will be the top priority Monday.
Okay. All right, all in favors?
Yes.
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 The next item on the agenda is the Director of Finance, and I am requesting that we table FY21 budget update and FY21 budget transfers until we have the full committee present, to the meeting on August 25th.
I agree.
Which brings us to Ms. Seibert and letter C, awarding the cleaning contract and awarding the extended day contract.
Sure. I'm going to do the extended day contract first.
Okay.
Because we have some invited guests that have been patiently in the gallery waiting for this one, so I'll open this one first. So we're very pleased to have a recommendation to the committee tonight to award the before and after school care program to YMCA and the North Shore. It's important to take a look back on how this procurement started. You know, I, I know the committee is well aware of it, people watching at home. As a result of the pandemic, we made a very difficult decision to close our extended day program that we were operating ourselves internally. And, and we know that that caused a lot of families a lot of difficulties. So we're very pleased that we took a survey of families and found out what their needs were and what they were looking for in a program, and then used that in development of our procurement process. This was procured under Section 38, Chapter 38, Section 6, which is a little different. It's where you go out and you ask for proposals, and you evaluate them on what's the most advantageous to the district, both the non-price and the price proposal. And so we were very, very fortunate to have five, sorry, the cat is now coming, it's unblocking. To have, yeah, respondents submit proposals to our consideration. And the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and myself, were the evaluators of the proposals. We evaluated them on eight different criteria that were outlined in the memo by the committee. And I'm very pleased to say that the Y was the people who were all most advantageous proposal, both for non-price and price. We were incredibly pleased with their submission. It was comprehensive and moved information on their philosophy, sample schedules and activities, as well as mapping information. They had a demonstrated track record of success in other communities, including Marlhead, Ipswich, Gloucester, April, Rockport, and Salem. They had a commitment to ensuring that every member, every community member has access. And on the price proposal side, it was the most advantageous to Swan's School overall. The revenue share percentage ranged from 10 to 15 percent. The YMCA's proposal was 18 percent revenue share. So it, it was hand down most advantageous to the district. And we're very pleased to have the Executive Director, Brian Flynn, and the Director of Education, Cindy Marshon, with us this evening as well. So I'll pause there. If there are any committee questions?
I don't know. I just know that families are sort of chomping at the bit to know what's going on, and, and they're dying to hear. So the sooner we can get the particulars out, the better. I think people are going to be excited.
Yeah, we had some preliminary discussions, the superintendent and I, about, given the choppiness of the school start, and now with the change even today, the school committee just approved. We were thinking an overall start date of September 13th. But I spoke earlier in the week with why they are committed to doing whatever we need and whatever our families need. So we don't have a committed start date, and then it will not be any later than September 13th. Whether it's earlier than that, I'm not sure. And, and this is consistent with what we've done in the past. I, I think this is, Raymond can speak to it. I know a couple of years ago, extended day didn't start for the first few weeks of school, because we had to ramp up staff. So this would not be, either the norm, to not have extended day start on the very first day of school.
Can we have an idea of like what it will look like? It's going to be before and after school? Is it going to, you know, be highly structured? Or, you know, just give us an idea of what it's going to look like?
Sure. It is before school from 7:00 AM in the morning to 8:00 AM, 8:15 is the bell schedule at the elementary level. There's no before school here at the middle school. And there's an after-school program at all, at all elementary schools and middle schools. I don't know if, and I don't know if Mrs. Marshon is on the spot, if she wants to talk a little bit about structure and programming. I know from reading their proposal, they're committed to physical activity and getting kids outside and getting them moving, because they've been inside and, and had tasks all day, and then segueing into maybe homework assistance and different project-based things, but I'll, I'll let, you're shaking your heads all over your speech.
I just want to interject and say, what really struck me in the proposal is their commitment to social, emotional well-being. And that is something that to partner with the YMCA in after-school and before-school care is really incredible. I'm really excited about. I'll let Cindy speak. Do you have to unmute her?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Good.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, so we'd like to do a balance. They, the kids are in school all day, so they are in a very structured environment. So we'd like to be able to be the recreational and, and social entity for them after school, so they can get out and have some physical play, run around, or utilize the gym if that's appropriate. And, you know, be social, have a snack, and enjoy some, you know, engaging with friends and playing a board game. But we also have open-ended art activities, as well as project-based, you know, theme-based learning, speed programs in our after-school program. So, you know, there's a lot of different, and we do have homework support as well. So there is time throughout the afternoon where they could have homework support to ensure that they're completing those assignments to get ready for their next day. And, and, yeah, so there's lots of balance going on there.
Excellent.
We're happy to answer specific questions, but I think that's it overall.
I have a question. I know in the past, it was a very, that you had to sign up in advance for after-school or before-school care, and that there was a schedule, and they could not accept drop-ins. Does that remain the case?
We do need a registration, yes, because the Department, we are licensed by the Department of Early Education Care, and they require documents for the children, involvement documents for the children to attend. So care permissions for, you know, everything from emergency contacts to first aid to, you know, development, development of history. And so there's documents that families are required to sign up on.
Okay.
So drop-in care is treated with that.
Okay.
Right.
I had a question, and I just actually wanted to acknowledge Mrs. Seibert, because I was pestering with questions about this earlier today. But my question is just around the cost to the families, just how it compares to prior years. I know we had kind of covert in between, but.
Right.
You know, is, is there just some ballpark, you know, how it compares to prior years?
I'm sorry, I did not look at prior year's pricing structure. We have not had a price increase in the extended day in some time, and, and when we shut it, I, I did not do that. So I apologize if that was, oh, what you're asking me to be able to answer tonight, so I don't have that answer.
The Y does pride itself on its flexible pricing program. So not only can we accept state contracts, state vouchers, but we also have a very robust philanthropic department that supports financial assistance for all families. So in our proposal, even families making, you know, an $80,000 a year can still get, you know, a, a percentage off of the tuition to ensure that everybody can participate.
That's good to know.
Thanks. And, and to Ms. Seibert, there was no expectation coming into this? It was just something I thought of during the presentation, so, okay?
Thank you.
So there is a vote requested on this, I believe?
Yes, there is.
Ms. Seibert, before we go to a vote, can you tell me how the 18% fits into our budget? And I know that in the past, we've used the profits from extended day to subsidize our heat and electric. How, how does the 18% fit in to where we were in the past?
It more than exceeds where we were in the past.
Okay.
So I, I think, I think that we find, I think with the FY22 budget, we had conservatively put in a $65,000 placeholder, and this will exceed that. Given, given the estimates that we've worked off of. So again, we don't know what enrollments are going to be yet. We don't know what, what discounts may or may not get offered in, based on, on the Y's generosity when it comes to financial assistance and accepting vouchers from state programs. I want to mention that, you know, well, Ms. Marshon mentioned that, we did not. Our extended day program did not accept vouchers from, from other agencies, because we weren't, we just, we weren't set up that way. We're, we're an educator, not a child worker here.
Right.
So, so there's a difference there. And so I think that is an added benefit to our families, that now that we outsource this, that is another avenue of, of support for some of our families that may be eligible in that type of system.
Yeah.
So overall, I think the, the focus here is on the percentage of share of revenue. And that, where, where they're at 18%, that is a major factor.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the extended day contract for before and after-school care as recommended by Martha Seibert. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll, in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion is approved.
Yay.
So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Cindy. Ryan, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate the continued partnership that we have. Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate the continued partnership that we have.
I just want to say I'm really thrilled about this. This is something that I've struggled with for a couple of years. And I know that, you know, since that is not our bailiwick, it's nice to have this so, not that it wasn't professional before, but to have this so professionalized, I think, is terrific. I really appreciate the ability to offer financial assistance. And I really like the fact that this is not on your plate.
Mm-hmm.
This is an exciting change, there's no doubt. And we couldn't be partnering with anybody better, so we're really excited.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, YMCA.
Thank you. Now, more other exciting awards for contracts, the cleaning contract for the high school. So this one was put out for procurement. The current contract for the high school beginning expires August 31st. We, this one outbid it under Chapter 30B. But we also did something different this year. And I really appreciate Mr. Casper, our director of facilities, and his enthusiasm for procurement and for looking to leverage state contracts. Because I always look to leverage them as well. And he researched FAS or FACD-1, which is a state contract that includes a cleaning contract within subset of cleaning. And he researched it and came and talked to me about it. And it was a great way to go out to bid for the service. It allowed us to look at a list of state contracts, approved vendors on state contract for cleaning services and send our bid directly to four of them and invite them to bid on our proposal. We also ended post our proposal on ConVise, which means anyone who's, any other vendors on the list are going to see it as an opportunity. And other vendors who aren't on the list and check ConVise contracts, we're going to have the opportunity to see it as well. So it doesn't limit your bidding pool, but it helps you really kind of identify and try and solicit bids from preferred vendors as well. So we've sent out bid proposals to four vendors. Advanced Maintenance Solutions, which is our current vendor, Complete Cleaning Company, Facilities Management and Maintenance, and Facilitech. The bid document required a watcher, a site visit. The director of facilities Michael felt strongly that anyone who wants to clean our buildings needs to come see what they look like before they submit it.
Mm-hmm.
And so we had three vendors that attended the required mandatory site visit. And that was Advanced Maintenance Solutions, Complete Cleaning and Facilities Management Maintenance. So of those three, two submitted proposals. Advanced Maintenance Solutions and Complete Cleaning. And as you can see, the overall three-year cost for those, for those two bids, Advanced Maintenance was the most advantageous or the lowest bid at $701,000. See, Mr. Giantis, I did anticipate your question here where I did look and see what the difference was between what current year, current year price versus the new bid. And it is an increase of seven and a half, seven and a quarter percent overall current payment. But years two and year three, it's only a 1% increase, which I think will be budget-friendly. And the current contract, same thing, it didn't escalate significantly year over year. So we've gone a number of years without significant escalation in our cleaning contract. So this is very, very reasonable. I'll pause there. We were on our own reference for AMS. We've been very pleased. We do have a favorable relationship with them. You'll notice that I did insert language here at the top of the memo that talks about, while it is a three-year contract, that our sole discretion to renew each of those years and to proactive renewal. And this is good for us and good for vendors as well. We don't want to do a bid contract every single year. So a three-year contract is good for vendors. But it also makes them know that it's not a guarantee three years. You have to earn that renewal each year.
Right.
I'll pause if any of the committee has any questions.
So if I'm reading this right, it's a, it's a bump up of almost between nine and a half and 10 percent over three years. However, still $75,000 less than the next competitor.
Correct.
Okay.
No, I mean, you know, we already know the company. They've been with us, so.
I don't have any questions.
And that's the, that's the three-year cost, not the one-year cost.
Right, right.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'm going to entertain a motion to award the Swamp Scott High School cleaning contract to Advanced Maintenance Solutions, the school's current vendor. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any last discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes. The contract is awarded.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, I didn't have the agenda. Superintendent Jalakis, is the administrative contract the next one?
The administrative contract is under the chair updates.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or under chair, so it'll come up there.
Okay. I think that would be it for me.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Bacon.
Hi, what do you think? I'm here today on behalf of the English Department of High School to request your approval for the purchase of a new textbook for the AP Literature course, which typically takes students senior year. The college board requires that we have textbooks that are published within the last 10 years. And this is the second oldest textbook we currently have in our, in our, in circulation. It was published, our current textbook was published in 2010. So the, the department chair, Kate Thomas, and the teacher, Royce Anne Blum, who's been teaching AP for many years, reviewed the college board's suggested list of texts for AP literature. They narrowed that list down to a couple of texts. One was an updated version of the credits that they have been using. And the other one, which they ultimately selected, is a text called The Compact Bedford Introduction to Literature, which was published in 2020. It's a little bit newer than the other one that they were looking at, so it should last a longer into the future. And the criteria that they used in selecting the textbook were sort of what they felt were friendliness and usability for students. They wanted a textbook that offered both additional and a hard copied edition. They considered the, the sort of other features that were related to the textbook's alignment with the AP Literature and Composition course requirements. So they felt that this textbook aligned well with what the course requirements were. And thirdly, they considered, they, the, the textbook coming with an assortment of formative assessments and comprehensive reviews to help students prepare for the AP test, which this textbook did. And finally, they considered the content and readings of the text through an equitable lens. And they liked this text because it included both classics of various genres and periods and cultures, as well as diverse representation of voices of women writers, writers of color, writers from other marginalized communities such as Indigenous and First Nations peoples. So those were their, that was their thinking in selecting this textbook. And proposing that we purchase this textbook to update our AP literature curriculum.
And it falls within your budget, so everything's good?
Yeah, yes, it falls within our budget. They, there are 50 students enrolled for AP Literature for the coming year, so we'll purchase 50 textbooks now. It costs about $113 apiece for a hardcover book plus shipping. It all comes out to about a $6,000 expense.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, our lights went out here.
I just, we're in the dark there.
Yeah, we're in the dark. Okay.
There we go. Dr. Bacon, out of curiosity, what happens to old textbooks?
That is a very good question. Right now, you have many old textbooks. And I have tried over the past couple of years to find people to take some of them without success. So our new media literacy, our media center person, Brandy Wilbur, who did that decision last year, has apparently found a way to dispose of old textbooks where they're either recycled or given to other people who can use them. So I need to contact her to figure out how best to clean out some of the old textbook storage that we currently have in the building. Especially at the high school.
I do see Ms. Seibert's.
And the store for the elementary, there's going to be more for the elementary because we're, we're doing some updating as well at the elementary district here.
I do see Ms. Seibert's hand up, and I do think they have to be declared surplus. Is that what you were going to say?
Yes.
I was going to say similar to that. Either declare a surplus or declare a de minimis value. Either way, so there's a, there's an involvement in my office with getting rid of stuff. So who man, it's a family.
Does that require a vote from the school committee? So should I bring forward like all the textbooks that we need to dispose of? Or is that just a committee?
If we need to declare a surplus, then probably a school committee vote. If we declare a de minimis value.
Yes, okay, yes.
So I stand for that.
Yeah, so if we could get titles and whether they'd be donated through Brandy Wilbur or be recycled, they're, they have to, I, my understanding is they have to come before school committee to be declared surplus.
Anything that we've got actually purchased?
Yes.
As opposed to things that we got for free?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
I got a question. I'm just curious why this is coming to us? Is it because of the dollar amount involved or just curious what the trigger is?
It's funny because I asked this question, I think it was last year or two years ago, probably two years ago. And this is just standard operating procedure.
Textbook purchases.
But textbook purchases in Massachusetts are supposed to be by law approved by the school committee.
John's like, what do you know? A new responsibility.
Yeah, you know, you're right, because, you know, I don't recall seeing anything like this come up, you know, in, you know, the 11 months I've been here, so that's.
I thought it was last year, but last year was just a blur. It makes me realize that it was two years ago.
It honestly doesn't happen that often because you try to use them for as long as you can, you know what I mean?
In the same way that when we approve new, like a new reading program at the elementary school, we're not necessarily approving the textbook, but the program that is recommended by.
I would say it's the opposite. You are approving.
The purchase.
Because it's the purchase of the textbooks, it's not the program itself, right?
All right.
Vote requested.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the, I'm just giggling because each time he gets up, it automatically comes up.
Yep.
Is it, is it motion activated?
Yes, we're not moving enough.
Oh, okay, so it thinks that we're in.
Do we need to wave our arms? No, move around a little bit.
I apologize. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the new AP Literacy textbook as recommended by Dr. Bacon.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you, Dr. Bacon.
Thank you.
Okay, so now it comes to me. And I'm going to actually, I have but one update, which is that I'm going to be coming to, I'm going to be coming to you, superintendent and school committee as I work on a letter in support of the new school. So I just want to make everybody aware that that's something that's going to be happening in the next few weeks. And you'll be asked to chime in on it.
Sure.
And then I'm going to turn this over for the collective bargaining agreement to, I'm so confused these days of who's doing which collective bargaining. The administrative assistants, is that you? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you then.
All right. Actually, I'm on both at this point.
Oh, okay, good. Make it easy.
So, yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't super prepared to say anything on it, but I know.
I think Ms. Seibert is.
Should we turn it over to Ms. Seibert?
Yeah, what, yeah, that would probably make a lot more sense. I know, I know we've come to, I know we've come to a meeting of the minds, but, you know, the details, yeah. Martha, I would defer to you.
Sure. No worry. I put together a cheat sheet for the occasion. So at this meeting, we're going to ask you to ratify the agreement with the ASMEC union, which is our administrative assistant. The contract term is from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2023, three-year agreement. Some of the highlights in the MOA are a 2% holdup in each of the three years, a one-time $1,000 bonus, that's gross net, for structural changes in language and change. Those changes include migration from a weekly payroll to a bi-week payroll. An agreement to a weekly timesheet and migration to an electronic timekeeping system when the district hit one. And the change to, and agreements to change the overtime language. Previously, the contract allowed overtime for any hours worked beyond 35. And we changed that mutual agreement to overtime for any hours worked in excess of 40. So I think that gives all of our administrators the opportunity to, from time to time, when agreed, to say, you know, can you stay an extra hour, you know, every day of the week to work on a project? Or can you stay an extra 15 minutes to help finish something up? So I think that was something that was open for both of us because it helps both us and the staff. And we also added a paid holiday for Juneteenth for multiple year and for your staff. I'm not sure if there are any specific questions or any other questions that we might have, but those are really the highlights of the meeting. There was a number of language change. I will say, I think a big member, Giantis, will say this as well. It was a very good negotiation. There was a lot of respectful dialogue about ways to improve the contract and areas that needed improvement that we came to agree on. So I didn't include like a lot of the language changes, but that's kind of benign. This is where the dollar raised.
Yeah, and, you know, and thank you, Ms. Seibert, for having your cheat sheet there. And, you know, I agree that, you know, during, during the negotiations, I think, you know, I think there was good listening on both sides. You know, I think the, the AA team came in with, you know, some concerns that frankly were probably longstanding, you know. Well, we brought it up the last time. We brought it up the time before the last time. And, you know, I think in a lot of cases, we're able to address a lot of those concerns, which I think was a very positive thing. And conversely, you know, there were, there were things that, that, you know, we felt very strongly about that they were willing to listen to. So I think, as Ms. Seibert said, that, you know, in the end, you know, it, we landed, I think everybody landed in a good place.
Excellent.
All right, so without further ado, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the Swamp Scott Administrative Assistance Contract. Do you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved. Thank you for representing us.
Thank you.
Revisiting the September dates, I would recommend waiting until the full committee's here.
I would agree too.
As well as the subcommittee with Mrs. Wright not here, I would request that we move the concussion policy and protocol update to the 25th. And the acceptable use policy, I would recommend we move forward with last year's version and then perhaps form a subcommittee of the school committee to really look at this policy moving forward and moving into the next school year to see if there need to be changes made to it. But because it's time-sensitive for us in the district, I would like to refer to last year's policy with no changes and then perhaps have our policy subcommittee look at it, which I believe is Mr. Giantis and Mrs. Wright.
Yes.
For, for the next year. Those would be my recommendations.
That works for me. Does that work for you?
That works for me. That was actually going to be my suggestion as well, just.
Great minds.
Great minds, yeah. And because I, I think my expectation going into, on, on the acceptable use one was that it was minor tweaks. And when I looked at it, it was, it looked like some, some significant tweaks.
And we haven't looked at it for quite some time. But I feel like because it's timely, let's just go with last year's and then really have the subcommittee look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, and as we had talked about, you know, even if it were needed for publishing, that we would still have to go through the process of first read and second read.
Right.
So this works out well.
So I just have more of a logistics question. So, you know, we formed this committee, a subcommittee, and we come up with new language. What happens then?
It would be implemented for the following school year.
Okay, so this would be in effect for the whole school year?
Yes, and so. Yes, and so I would suggest that Ms. Mackey Knowles, our director of technology, be part of it. She worked with Ms. Wright on, on this previous one, but I do think it's time for us to revisit it as a, well, you to revisit it as a policy subcommittee. So I think timing's right. We would just keep this one in place for this school year and the other one would be ready for the next school.
Does it have to be? Isn't that something that could change mid-year?
You have to get signatures on it and getting signatures once is, is challenging enough.
Like physical signatures.
Yes, yes, so.
Next year?
Yeah.
Okay, say no more.
That brings us to the consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda is designed to expedite the handling of routine and miscellaneous business to the district. The school committee can adopt the entire consent agenda with one motion. At the request of any committee member, sorry, my eyes are paging. At the request of any committee member, any item can be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Tonight, we have two, uh, items. We have our regular session minutes from June twenty-third, and then we have warrant number twenty-one fifty-three, twenty-one fifty-five, twenty-two oh-two, and twenty-two oh-four. Um, I will accept a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Uh-uh.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion passes. Um, okay, it is eight eleven, and if there are, I, let me, let me move over to Zoom.
Can I ask a question to the chair?
Sure.
Um, do we need, do we need to vote on that acceptable use policy or is it just going to continue?
It's just going to continue because it just stands.
Got it, just wanted to make sure we're fully gone.
Um, so I am going to, um, I don't see any attendees on Zoom, so I'm going to assume that we don't have anybody who would like to speak for public comment. Um, but I'm going to sit here for a minute or so just to give people the opportunity. Um, and that's only because I know I spoke with somebody today who was contemplating, uh, speaking to us.
Okay.
Um, so, it's too bad we have no attendees, but that's a sure sign that life is getting back to normal.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, uh, the meeting is adjourned at eight twelve PM. Thank you for dialing in and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, good night.